It is 5:30 and I'll call our work session to order. And it's always a good thing when the family is around the table. Tonight, this work session is going to help us understand our finances as we move forward to accomplish the vision and the work that we need to do for the people of Burnsville. So with that, I'm going to, since we've got a big presentation tonight, I'm going to ask Greg to make some remarks and introduce Dan because it's his show tonight.
It is indeed his show. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I really look at this conversation as a continuation of our all-day work session. We talked about being back together and starting the budget process early, both for your benefit and for the communities. And I'm excited to do the 2023 budget process considerably differently than we've done in the past couple of years anyway. I really believe, and as we've talked about, that we all need to have the same information and we need to be committed to giving you the right information to make good policy decisions. And that's really what this is all about this evening. I would be remiss not to recognize that our entire leadership team is around the table. They are all busy. Folks who have spent many hours already today on behalf of the community, and I really appreciate their presence tonight and throughout the rest of our budget conversations for 2023. This is also reflective of the work that Dan has led in the organization. The leadership team has spent far more than a day in terms of hours in meetings together, really rolling up their sleeves, understanding where we are financially, offering and lending their perspective, and really informing the discussion for tonight. And that's the type of environment that I'm hopeful that we create together as we move forward. A couple of words about tonight's presentation, and then I promise I'll be quiet. There's a lot of information to share here. So a couple of things in front of you. There is a printed version of the slides that Dan will be using for your notes or following along purposes. And Dan will also reference our strategic priorities that are also in front of you, I would assume, several times during tonight's discussion. Like I said, there's a lot of information to share. Our purpose tonight is to start the conversation, to make sure that we're all operating with the same information. We aren't going to be asking you a whole heck of a lot of policy questions tonight. We really want to get on the same page. And then we will move into our April work session, which will look very similar to this one, and try to inform that conversation based on the questions and comments that you have this evening. Also, not to be a wet blanket, but another disclaimer, we are very early in this process. We haven't even embarked on the formal audit for last year's financials. So we've done our best to put the right information in front of you tonight. And the disclaimer that Dan I know will repeat in more eloquently say than I, there is likely to be some change as we go through the process, just by a function of the fact that we are nearly four months ahead of where we usually are in having this conversation. Last couple of things from me. Dan had mentioned in the all-day work session that part of our perspective going into these conversations this year really needs to be celebratory in nature. We've identified certain opportunities and challenges through what is a very comprehensive 10-year financial management plan that Dan and Ellers will present to us tonight. The good news is, we understand what those challenges are, and we're starting to talk about them. So we don't have all the answers tonight. We're not looking to solve all of our problems or address all of those challenges this evening, but we are really committed and focused on making sure that we all are talking about the same information. And particularly, Council, you have the opportunity to ask the questions that you need to ask. And I think I'll end with this. I've talked a lot organizationally, and we've talked a lot together about moving forward intentionally as a team. And as I look around the table tonight, this is really reflective of the type of environment, the type of culture that we're trying to build and enhance organizationally. And with that, I'm looking forward to really leading through this process together around the table. So I'll turn it over to Dan. I'll let Dan make some introductions of our other partners who are here from Ellers this evening. And to the mayor's point, and to borrow your words, it's very much Dan's show this evening. So, Dan?
Well, thank you, Greg. I appreciate those introductory remarks, and I'll echo them. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time this evening to spend what will be, hopefully, just a couple hours running through some comments and some analysis of the financial position of the city of Burnsville. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce my colleague Jean Vogt from Ellers. Some of you know Jean. She was actually the interim finance director for a couple of weeks before I arrived at Ellers. I've made the joke with a few of you before that started on the first Ellers and sent me to Burnsville on the second. So I started two jobs in one week. So Jean has been instrumental in putting together the plan along with your municipal advisor Stacy. And so we have been working together to craft this document. And as Greg mentioned, the leadership team has also had the opportunity to review it on a couple of occasions, first kind of in a preliminary state with some feedback from them, and then a final review that we did last week with some comments. So a lot of what's in this is reflected of those discussions as well. So that is also emblematic of this revised budget process, where we're trying to include more parties earlier in the process to gain perspective and create a more comprehensive document. One thing that I would say is, we do have Jean on standby with copies of the plans. So if there are questions, we do have the opportunity to answer some of them that may be a bit more granular, but admittedly, we're trying to keep this discussion at a higher level. But I know there's a lot of baked in, and so if you have some questions, we do have the opportunity to kind of peek at those. Or of course, we can always do a little follow-up. So I guess, welcome to, I guess, what was essentially the first meeting of the 2023 budget process. All right, there we go. So the goals really for today is, Greg mentioned, our first, just to continue the conversation that the council has had from the all-day work session. There was much discussion about the strategic direction of the community, some of the needs that were identified by the individual departments, and more importantly, some of the resources that may be required to meet those needs. As a result, there was some revision to the strategic priorities, and the council has reviewed those at a previous work session. As Greg mentioned, you have a copy of those just for your reference during our presentation this evening. But again, building on the discussion from that all-day work session, and those are my organizational priorities. But additionally, we were really talking about reviewing the financial position of the organization and the financial future of the city of Burnsville, and kind of what that means over the next 10 years. There are a few items that we're planning on touching on throughout the discussion. It's worth noting that the financial management plan itself has many other recommendations as we posted on this slide, some of which are really at the operation administrative level that will be the responsibility of the finance department. So just know there's more that will have to happen than what may be discussed here. So we'll walk through many of these in greater detail in just a few slides. Something I think we've talked about the financial management plan quite a bit. It's come up during the all-day work session. It's come up when we've had conversations about the one-time funding sources. But I don't think we've ever taken a little time just to talk with the group about, really, what is it? It's a multi-year plan of all of the tax-supported funds. One thing I would just note for the group, and I'll mention it a few more times throughout the presentation, this doesn't include any of the utility funds. Those were analyzed by Ellers a few years ago through a more comprehensive utility rate study. So they're not part of this presentation this evening, and that is purposeful by design. So generally, the plan, as you see, integrates debt, capital plans, future debts. We look at the tax growth and the tax base, so we got some great information from Jenny about that that was actually incorporated late last week. And then we will talk about some future operating costs. But generally, what we're trying to do is weave together all of the actions and directions that have previously been taken by the council into one comprehensive plan. So what are some of the reasons for this? Kind of what makes it practical? The plan itself will help the organization manage expectations. It will really allow the group to consider trade-offs, opportunity costs as you work through new spending proposals. It will allow you the opportunity to evaluate them against the priorities that have been said in the all-day work session and affirmed by the city council. You'll also have the opportunity to weigh those proposals against some parameters. We're going to talk in a little bit about some property tax expectations and get some feedback from the group about what those may look like, and that will feed into future budget conversations. Importantly, it will help the organization maintain its assets and fund balances. When we take these long-term views, we'd like to make sure that there is periodic replacement of expensive items or projects, and that we're being very cognizant of the levels of the individual funds to make sure that they're not running too low, giving the organization the opportunity to respond to certain items. One thing, and I suppose very selfishly for me, it helps reduce stress in the budget process. One thing that is very nice about having a financial management plan and going through more of a group discussion like this is it, as Greg mentioned, it's a very iterative process. And we are building on previous discussions, previously adopted budgets, previously adopted plans. And in that way, the council and the leadership team has a good sense of really what's coming. And if things change, how it's changing and why, what things may come off the list because things are being put on the list. So in that way, it really is a great vehicle for discussions. One thing we point out, and Madam Mayor, you've asked about it in the past, we know that rating agencies like financial management plans. In fact, in some rating structures, management factors are 20% of the overall score. And so they will look at how well-managed is the organization. One thing they consider is how thoughtful and how comprehensive is your long-term financial planning. And then, as I mentioned, it will help us respond to really changes in the environment, emergencies, in maintaining those fund balances. It puts the city in a stronger position to respond to unanticipated or unknown costs. So as I mentioned, it will really, the result of this plan, it's integrating all of those budget and tax and considerations, and also the capital plans. And really, what it's designed to do, and as I mentioned at the beginning, it will allow this group to really focus on the big picture and the future direction of the organization, and really get into some of the integrating policy issues, not necessarily individual budget requests or individual budget questions. It will allow this group, as I mentioned, to focus on the long-term health of the city and not necessarily just what is happening in the next fiscal year. So in that way, the plan gives the council and the leadership team, and really the community as a whole, the opportunity to look at any individual decision that is made and see how it impacts the financial position of the community over time. And hopefully, if the work is done well, these projects, as they come online, tend to be less controversial because the conversations aren't begun earlier in the process, they happen over a series of years, they're included in the plan, there's an opportunity to review trade-offs, an opportunity costs, and ultimately, when the time comes to make those larger outlays, the group generally knows the strategic direction of the organization. And then, as I mentioned, it is a great vehicle to communicate with stakeholders because it will give a lot of insight into why certain decisions have been made for very particular financial reasons. So by way of kind of jumping in with both feet, this is the general fund, 5.7% levy increase. This is the plan that was considered and adopted as a part of the 2020 budget last year in the out financial plan. It does assume a 5.7% levy increase through 2026. And as you notice, the unassigned fund balance has actually dropped down to 30% by the end of the planning windows, as you can see here in 2026. As a result, the city is required at that point in time, if you order here to your fund balance policy, to increase the levy by about $12.1 million, or that's reflected in that 23.1% at the end of that traditional five-year planning window that the city has used. I know there were some questions, and one thing that was asked internally, like what happened as a part of the regular budget development process. It's worth noting that the previous 2022 budget did not violate the fund balance policy. It actually brought the fund balance down to above 42%, but it did not include the additional out-years. And additionally, it did not include a consistent application of inflation across the general fund. So when those things are adjusted, what we see is that the fund balance actually decreases significantly if the city were to remain at a consistent 5.7% year-over-year increase in the property tax levy. The one thing I would also note, and as you see in bold point, number four, is it does not include any additional staffing requests. So as a reminder from the all-day work session, we went around the room, and each of the directors talked about their needs, and it was apparent at that point in time that many of the departments needed additional personnel resources in order to better achieve those strategic priorities that were discussed and affirmed by the council. So there you see the 23.1%. It's just worth noting, the way this model works is there's just that one-year adjustment in order to push the city back up to its fund balance requirement. This is what the tax levy would look like on trends, and you can see right here in that year where there is the jump, that the levy goes up significantly. So just another way to describe what you were saying on the previous slide. So what would happen in this scenario on a median-valued home, as you can see down here, we are assuming $292,400 on a median-valued home. You can see essentially through '23 to '26, about a $75 increase in the property tax levy year-over-year. And in 2027, there would be about just under a $400 increase in the property tax levy to make that one-time adjustment to bring the city back up to its fund balance requirement. In 2028, it actually goes back down because the way this model works is you're essentially, we're always trying to engineer to hit that fund balance threshold. And this is more information than we'd ever need, but if you ever want to talk about it, we have the resident expert on fiscal disparities, but this essentially fiddles with our fiscal disparities values, and it kind of throws the calculations into a little bit of a funk, so that's why you see it go up and then down. It's a nice illustration, though, because the more stable predictable growth of the property tax levy will actually avoid this type of roller coaster. This is the kind of thing that ultimately we wouldn't want to happen, because as you know, it just becomes more difficult to manage and more difficult to explain over time. And then essentially, in the out-years, you see about $75 per year. That little blip in 2029 is for some additional staffing. But right now, the city's been averaging right around $52, so you're consistent through 2026, but then again, to adjust to that fund balance number is where you see that jump. So ultimately, this is the problem that was identified in the plan, and this is what we tried to basically correct as part of the review of the various financial positions of each of the funds. So just by virtue of that discussion, there are a few kind of key takeaways to keep in mind as we navigate through the rest of the presentation. First is, we talked about a little bit, additional resources are really mean to help the city better achieve its strategic priorities. I want to be very clear here, it's not to say that the community and the city are not working on those strategic priorities, but as we know from the all-day work session, every department, really to a department, said that they needed additional resources in order to accomplish the vision laid down by the city council and the expectations of the community. One thing that was talked about a lot was really being an employer of choice, and that really factors into a lot of the personnel cost, really how are you going to be enhancing those wellness efforts, supporting staff development, providing for superior city facilities, maintaining a strong complement of staff. And that's a very important point, because what we have heard from the departments is that there's a lot of concern about burnout and fatigue because there's a lot of work, there's not enough people to do it, and so ultimately, they're asking for more staff as not to place really undue stress or burden on those folks that are currently with the organization. And one thing we heard a lot during the all-day work session and in some of the discussions afterwards, because of those staffing issues, there hasn't been a meaningful opportunity for cross-training in the organization. And I can speak personally from the finance department's perspective, we know that there's not enough time in the day for staff in the finance department to train each other on what it is that they do. So in a lot of tasks, we're really only one person deep. So in the event that that person goes out, we're really kind of knocked on our back heel in order to respond to those tasks have to be accomplished. So it's just another kind of question about resiliency that may exist in the organization because of those cross-training issues. It's not to say the work wouldn't get done, it would just be much more challenging because there is not enough space in the day to do some of those cross-training activities. Few other things that we'll talk about in greater detail. Right now, the financial management plan essentially demonstrates that franchise fees are inadequate to support all of the planned capital projects, and we'll get into a little more detail about some of the options that are available. We've identified some additional debt that may be issued by the city to smooth out some of the challenges that are identified in the plan. And we know through our analysis that eight of the 14 property tax-supported funds actually fall below their recommended fund balance thresholds at some point in time during the 10-year projection. In our discussions with the leadership team, we identified, and we'll talk about this one in a little greater detail on the slide, 1.5 million in what we characterize as deferred park maintenance costs, and that's primarily due to a lack of funding and also a lack of staff to deliver on those projects that are planned or, at this point in time, maybe not planned for parks. And so right now, we just generally know that 2023 will require a property tax levy increase that is greater than 5.7%. We're fairly confident that in those out-years, it will likely be higher than that as well, and that really staying at that number over the next 40 years may not be an option. Now, with that stated, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that there are all the policy questions that can be addressed as a part of the levy discussion, and those policy questions really can be to increase the levy to meet needs, to modify the strategic priorities, and perhaps change service levels, to delay projects. So it's not necessary to say that it will always be an increase like this, but what we've done in the plan is taken a look at strategic priorities, the needs of the department, and we have sized the plan to meet those priorities. It's not to say the council can't change its mind in the future about how some of these things might happen and what the needs of the community might be, but from our perspective, especially coming from Ellers and working on the project, we don't make those determinations for you. We look at what you've said you need, we look at what the organization is asking for, and we try to size the plan from that. Of course, it can change, and that's okay, and that's what really the rest of the year and the rest of the budget process is for, is we'll have some opportunity to do that. So it may be very, very challenging. And as I've said to the group, when we talk about these, sometimes they can just be, it can be a very serious kind of dour affair, but really, as Greg mentioned, the virtue of a long-term financial plan is to identify problems, celebrate the fact that you have found them, and now appreciate that you are in a position to do something about it, that you're not going to wake up, like in the previous slide suggested, five years from now and realize, oh geez, if we really want to keep this thing going, we need a 28% increase in the property tax levy. The plan gives you options, the plan creates space for dialogue, the plan gives room to talk about what the community needs and what is the best way to resource that. And so really, you'll be fine. You've got a lot of time in this year to figure it out, and we've got years to figure it out on top of it.
You just whack this over the head and say, it's going to be okay. We can make this all happen.
You'll be fine.
Just know the challenges, right? Open the door and give us the challenges and say, it's going to be okay.
There's another thing I'll say too, and we'll talk about a little more in some of the particular slides, the challenges that are identified in this plan are not necessarily unique to Burnsville. These are things that all cities experience in some way, shape, or form, and we can look to other examples, other communities, to figure out some of the best ways to accomplish these things. You exist in a system, much like all the others, that deal with unfunded mandates from the state, redevelopment issues that are happening in your community, all things that require a response. So just know that even in some situations, you may have some issues that are uniquely Burnsville, and you may have some issues that are really seen throughout the other communities. So in that way, you're not kind of atypical. So we looked at 14 funds, the ones with the stars are really the ones that have some issues and need some additional review, and we'll take a little time here in a few slides to kind of walk through all of them in a little greater detail. But just by way of disclosure, these are all the funds that were looked at and have additional information on any number of them. Before we kind of jump in, I always like to take a little time to talk about the assumptions that we're making. So invariably, when we look at each individual fund and we talk about what's happening there, we have to make some assumptions about what would happen over time and model them accordingly. So we have a few things that we know just from policy that right now, the general fund has a fund balance policy between 40 and 50% of next year's expenditures, and we've assumed 45% for the plan. Your policy also talks about 45% being a little bit of a benchmark, anything above that number, is that available for one-time expenditures, and anything below that, not so much. We have made an assumption about the use of the American Rescue Plan Act money. So in the previous financial plans, that was planned at $2 million per year over a three-year period. In years '23 and '24, those amounts have now been increased to $3 million to help to frame some of the costs related to the plan. And it's also worth noting that right now, this recommendation remains consistent with the recommendation from the work session related to the funding. We've taken the capital improvement plans, and so all of the projects are funded per those plans. We haven't taken anything out. As I mentioned, we've identified perhaps some opportunities for debt financing, and then we added in full-time equivalent requests per what we've heard from the departments, and we'll talk about those in greater detail. Few other things, as I mentioned, we got some information from community development about sort of the new growth, and that's been built into this plan, and then we are assuming 2% thereafter. And then right now, 2.5% increase in other revenues and a 3.5% increase in expenditures. The one thing to make note of is, financial management plans, by their definition, are conservative documents, so essentially, revenues are a little lower than expenditures. So you may see a little widening over time, but ultimately, if revenues come in to a higher and expenditures a little lower, that's okay. The reverse is much more challenging, where you don't have as much money as you thought and your costs are greater than you thought. So it's really designed to make sure that we don't create any unanticipated budget holes. We have also created some recommended fund balance requirements for other funds, so I'll talk about those in greater detail when we actually get to them. And then right now, there'll be another slide about this in a few slides, but just under $52 million in projected debt over the next 10 years. And that may be, look like a big number, but when we get to the debt profile, it's actually relative monies when you spread it out. A few things worth noting are the things that aren't included in the plan. So we've made a bunch of assumptions about things that are in, and we need to kind of disclose and disclaim those things that aren't. So right now, we know that there are any number of studies, plans, and analyses that are occurring at the staff level. We know right now that there's going to be a compensation and benefits review. Typically, cities will do that every three to five years, essentially to make sure that their compensation package is competitive with the marketplace. There's a facility studies, it's ongoing. We actually had a core team meeting earlier today to talk about some of the phasing of that. There's a fleet study to kind of right-size the fleet and perhaps consider other methods for fleet finance, the organizational analysis, which the council has been well-revealed on, about kind of looking at the organization and making sure that we have the resources in the right places. And then additionally, later this summer, there'll be, what we're kind of characterized at this point in time, a park system evaluation in inventory, where a consultant will go through the park system and take a look at all the various assets and try to understand what needs to be replaced and when, and that will be used to inform some of the creation of the park capital project fund. So at some point in time, when all of those are complete, and as Greg mentioned, as a part of the iterative step that is the budget, that information will become available, and it will be folded into the financial management plan, it will be folded into the budget development process. So some of these numbers will change just by virtue of the fact that we're going to be getting new information, projects will become more proximate as we get through the year, next year gets closer, and we get better estimates, better analysis, we have a better sense of what's going to be happening in the following year, and so those things may end up changing. The other thing that's not mentioned on this slide that I'd be remiss if I didn't include is two things that will change, of course, over the course of the year, what is happening in the broader economy, and we will have a discussion about that during the Outlooks and Objectives workshop on April 5th, to kind of talk to you about what we're seeing as far as forward guidance is concerned related to economic growth and activity. And then, of course, right now, the Minnesota Legislature is in session, and so we don't know what will be happening with state policy. There is, of course, a very large surplus at the state level, and that could impact cities in any number of ways depending on what decisions will be made. So eventually, those things will also be folded into some of these discussions, and we don't have a good read on some of them now, but we'll include some more information So what would end up happening after we bake in all of those assumptions, both known and unknown? Right now, we're kind of starting at the end, so we'll go through all the slides in a minute here for the individual funds, but over the next 10 years, we have included the new development, and that may also impact some of the property owner who assume that 2%, as I've mentioned. And right now, when we include all of those different adjustments for 2023, the plan recommends a 10.9% increase in the property tax levy, or about $139 a year, or it will be about $12 a month, or if you're going by the day, .39. So it's worth noting, if you remember from a previous slide, your average over the previous year was about $52, so this is a little more than what the community may be accustomed to year-over-year. And because of the FTE requests that are included in the plan, you can see in '24 and '25, there are similar increases. The one thing that I would stress is, at this point in time, '24 and '25 are a little further out, and we may have the opportunity to feather some of those FTE requests, assuming that the council were supportive of them. After that kind of three years...
Dan, Dan K has a question.
Question on the assumption of 2% annual increase in existing property values? What has that trend been in the last five years?
Over the last five years, depending on the individual properties, if we're looking at residential homesteads, it's probably in the 7% to 8%. if we're looking at residential homesteads, it's probably in the 7% to 8% annually.
Why are we using 2%?
It's a conservative model. So if there is more development that happens and the levy changes year over year, then these amounts would be modified a little bit.
Okay.
But it's essentially designed to assume that there's not that much development.
And I think we're running out of space to build. So we're going to have to start tearing down buildings, so that's going to...
Yeah.
Yeah, now we're talking about existing values, not new money. The existing value's been running 7% or 8% for several years now. I'm just, my question is, I'd like to see the model done on like a 5% or a 6%, which is more realistically going to happen unless we hit a recession and values drop. They're probably going to stay steady with the lack of inventory and the market demand as it is. So, you know, looking at numbers based on 2% is a good conservative, but I'd also like to see, okay, what's, what would happen to those numbers if it was a 5% or 6%? You know what I mean? Or like a low, medium, high sort of scenario?
We can do that, but in the past, you know, when I think back to what happened in 2008, when we were projecting some higher increases in future years, then we did end up getting burned. So we do like to take a more conservative approach, knowing that this is what we like to consider a worst-case scenario. We're happy to consider other options as well to give you a range, if that would be helpful.
I remember that, Jean, when we were moving into the recession and you were here helping us to really understand what that was going to be and what we're moving into with regard to the recession 2009.
I just think that disparity of 7% to 8% is a little bit too broad. That's, this is not conservative to me, this is planning like almost no growth. And I think if you're going to model it, we need to present models that reflect a low, medium, and high, not just the complete polar opposite of what's going on in the marketplace. That's just from my perspective.
Keep in mind, that's 2% on existing values. So new development, which is what we've been working on with Jenny, is factored in as well. So those new, those new values are, are included in future years. And then, once they're in, they're also inflating by 2% a year as well.
I figured the new money was in there from the, the chart that we got in the past, but the, it's very clear, 2% on existing property values is, in my opinion, extraordinarily low. It's like we're, we're drawing a, we're drawing a chart here that has the worst possible case scenario in expenses and almost the least possible scenario of revenue side. And that's very conservative, but it's a little extremely conservative from my perspective. But, and I would rather see, as I noted, models that, that give us a little different picture instead of saying, your expenses are going to be way up here. No, your revenue's probably going to be way down here, when in fact it's been running for five years, more like here.
So Dan and Jean, when you do that analysis, what I would like is to how you compare it also to what's happening in the economy at that time, just like you did in 2008, when you made those comparisons with what the reality is.
And we can certainly prepare that.
Yeah, we can go back, and I have to go back to refresh my memory, to be honest. There's a lot going on back then.
Deal with worst-case scenarios. If you can make it under worst case, then parting is pretty good to go ahead. It depends on it being optimal at all times, you're probably going to fail your business.
Yeah, but we can certainly look at, at different ranges.
And then what, what's the impact? That's what we're looking at, all of that. I, I really want to understand the impact, because these are thoughtful decisions that we need to make as we go forward. And you're looking at a 10-year view right here. And that's what I like, it's, it's that long view. So it gives us the opportunity to make some different changes as we go along.
Councilmember Keeley, would a high, median, low kind of comparison with this information be helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I think a 2, 4, 6 would be more realistic, given that we've been running 7% or 8% or higher for quite some time. You know, even, even a 6% is not exactly an aggressive number for a high.
Just for perspective, in my insurance industry, I don't know how closely connected this is here, but we have what's called an inflation guard. So your homeowner's policy goes up X% every year to keep up with standard inflation. Almost every single one of my companies took between a 7% and 15% hit just because building costs and values are spiking at a minimum of 7%. And then, you know, there's other numbers they got to play with to mitigate costs and premiums and that. But everything I've heard is that the average, and again, Dan, I don't know how relative that is to this chart, but 7%, at least in my world, was a minimum on, you know, standard market inflation cost, but...
Yeah, I don't know that we can assume that that's going to continue for the next 10 years.
Right.
Is the only thing, and I think the insurance industries may be on the other side of the coin, so they're looking at safeguarding what they have. We, we're focusing more on what the accounting assessor is doing.
And I understand that replacement costs and market value are two different things.
Right.
Market value's always going to be less.
Yep, right, so market value's going to be at 95% and 105% of what the property would sell for at an arms-length transaction on the open market.
Yep. Okay, just a thought, thinking all of...
And a previous value is different from your assessed value.
Yes.
Assessed value is the same as estimated.
Yes, assessed value from the county.
But taxable is different from estimated because of the market value homestead exclusion, so...
Yep.
Don't get me started on property taxes, you'll all be asleep at 20:00 and it's...
I think, I think there are a couple of things, Metamare Council, Councilmember Keeley, to your question, I think April provides us the opportunity, I'll, I'll work with Lers, but perhaps to bring some of that assessment back to the council for, for more discussion, informed by our past history and what things are looking like into the future. Councilmember Keeley, to your point.
And what is the actuality of what all of that was in the past moving forward?
It's potentially another good opportunity for us to also not just focus on percentage increases year over year of the levy as a metric, but what are some of the other metrics or indicators that we might want to also consider tax rate being one of them, that helped in a frame of this narrative and, and the council's dialogue?
Yes.
Well, to Dan G's point, I would rather be somewhat conservative than overzealous about that, because then we can make those adjustments if we end up being incorrect in our assessment.
Yeah, I agree. Kara?
So, looking at the impact on median value homes, and going by what, what you have here, and yes, it is a li, it is, you know, with the, the average being 68 in previous years, and hitting that, you know, 2023, 24, 25, having those, those jumps. I mean, that brings us from like, the average home in 2020, what they pay compared to what they would pay in 2025, that's like $660 some dollars of an increase. That's, that's pretty high.
Not quite.
So if it's 68, 68, 68, 139...
No, the 68 is for future years beyond 2025.
Beyond, so what is it previous then?
52.
52, okay, so...
On average, on average.
Right, so just over 600 then? But we're still breaking that, like, we're, we're breaking 600. That's... I would like us to keep that in mind when we talk about yearly increases and how, well, it's just this amount this year. But it isn't, because for many of our, many of our residents, they do not see a corresponding increase in like their income, plus they're receiving like other increase in costs that are happening as well. So I, I don't want to downplay the amount that we're asking them to absorb. It's significant. And looking at the tax levy trends, bringing us to a $45 million-ish general in 2025, and then five years later, having that be 55, just in general. Those are also significant jumps from our trends. I assume you're going to explain why we're having, why it would be proposed that we have that significant of a jump in our, our levy.
Yeah, we'll definitely talk about it. It's primarily related to the FTE requests, which we'll go through in greater detail here in a few slides. A few things I would just touch on here. One, that 60 per year average works out on average over the rest of the planning window at about 3.8%. I think which would be a relatively, I want to say, I don't want to downplay, say like modest, but I think a reasonable amount year over year, given the increase in costs the city anticipates to be experiencing. The other thing related to the cost related for any individual homeowner, at these amounts, there may, there would certainly be, for certain homeowners, opportunities to pursue refunds through the state. There are two refund programs, a regular refund, which is a homestead credit, which is means-tested. So if someone has a low enough income, they can apply to the state and they'll get a refund from the state. Or there is a special refund where their property taxes have to go up by, I believe it's 12%.
And $100.
And $100 year over year, and they can apply to the state to have some of that money, basically give it back to them in that year. So as part of this process, and then if we were to move forward at these numbers, which I'm not saying that we are, but if we did, we would go through a process to educate the community about those programs to make sure that those resources were available to them to help, kind of, launch some of these issues.
Got it, save money if the state would just cut the middleman out and give us the frickin' money. Instead of, I'm sure there's like how many employees then that have to process that and siphon it off, and... There we go. All right, yep, let's do it inefficiently, but all right, thank you.
Proceed, Dan.
Okay, so we talked about the tax levies. So this is the staffing history of the city. And thanks to Human Resources for helping put this information together. As you can see, in 2006, that was actually when the city was at about the same level of staff that it is today, pre-recession. And then, as we've talked about in previous conversations and at the all-day work session, the city, as a result of the Great Recession, offered a voluntary retirement incentive program. And that kind of led, led to the low watermark there in 2009. As you can see, basically through about 2016, the FTEs remained relatively flat. It looks like a little more, one thing I would mention here is just the scale kind of makes the disparities just look a little bigger. But then in 2017 is when you see when the city kind of started increasing the FTE complement. Interestingly enough, when you look at it at a per 1,000, FTE per 1,000 resident, the population of the city actually dipped in this period of time as well. And so the, the amount has remained relatively consistent over time in terms of the number of FTEs that the community, city has had in certain community on a per 1,000 resident basis. But right now, it's about 291 FTEs. This is all FTEs. When we look at just tax-supported funds, what you can see here, and I just want to stress, it's down here in the notes as well. It does not include any FTEs that are supported by the enterprise funds, and it doesn't include any internal reorganization of FTEs. So for example, you're talking with Human Resources earlier today, there have been situations where like utility billing has moved between departments, the front desk has moved between departments, payroll has moved between departments. So some of those changes are not necessarily captured in some of these tables. But I think it's a nice way to illustrate kind of what has happened in the organization. So 2006, kind of 14 years ago, you can see what they were by department and division. This middle column represents really the highest that each department or division has been over that period. And then 2022, just for reference. So if you look at the change from 2022 from the highest, and this is really, I think, when you think, when you talk to departments, this is really what they're talking about. They're not looking at 2006 or 2005 and thinking about what it was back then. They're thinking, what was my personal high watermark for my department, and why don't I have that now? So this is an insight into kind of how some of these departments have changed from the highest level of FTEs, again, with those disclaimers. So you can see a few, so fewer in the city manager's office, finance down, human resources down a little, police, building one really in double digits, now from basically 102 FTEs to about 91 right now. Public Works and Park Trac still down about... And then just as reference here, just the change from 2006, so you can see some of those things. But generally, as you see in many of these departments, they are, they are a few FTEs less than they have been over the last 14, 15 years. So just a little additional context about maybe how some of these FTEs came back online over those 14 years as, as that number went back up.
Dan K?
City managers, finance, H.I. didn't know about, the, the one that surprises me is police. And I knew you were in need, but are you down from the 75 sworn officers that we've had for a decade or so?
You mean right now with staff out, or are you saying?
Yeah, I mean, is the 10-5 because it's been difficult to backfill retirements?
No, it was more, right, we are, we have been down due to retirements and medical leaves, right? So we've been down from the 75 staff. I mean, 93 total with civilians, but the sworn are the 75. And then some of those were around traffic positions that were lost over the years, and street crimes and some of that, so I have to go back and look exactly. But within this timeframe, it's current staffing that has been down as well.
Councilmember Keeley, Metamare councilmembers, this is reflective, though, of an accurate and budgeted FTE count. So it is, is not to, not to pick on Tanya and her team, from the high and from 2006, they are 10.5 FTEs lower today than they were from those high points, budgeted.
Yeah.
This is authorized FTEs in the budget.
Yeah. Well, this is all very good information, because it gives us a lens of what we need. And this is even before the analysis that we're going to get back about the organizational staffing needs. And I think that's a 10-year lookout as well in the staffing needs, so yes.
Metamare members of the council, I would look to Bethany leading the project, but I've seen head nods that, yes, it is 10 years to try to be aligned.
Okay, yep.
Metamare, stealing the words right from my mouth, I have a note right here that says, additional information we provide is part of the organizational analysis. Know that that is on the way, but for the purposes of the meeting tonight and to provide a little additional context to our discussion, we wanted to give you a little preview to it. But I'm sure the city's partners at CLA will do a more comprehensive analysis than we'll...
And I just want us all to understand that this is the first look until we get the study. And then some shifting is probably going to take place.
So by way of breakdown, these are the additional staff that are actually included in the plan by department and division. One thing that I would stress as you look through this is that these are not necessarily specific requests at this time. They're really designed to be preliminary. They are occurring in advance of the organizational analysis, and they're occurring in advance of the formal 2023 budget process. Eventually, departments through our revised budget process will be asked actually to submit requests for FTEs, and that, that's when they'll be real, really formally vetted by the city manager and finance and put into the actual budget. But I think this is just interesting insight for the council and the leadership team to see. One thing I would stress is especially in 2023, these requests that were, that are included are consistent with the requests that have been seen in previous budget years. So what's happening in '23 and what's been included in '23 is not really any different than what the departments have asked for in the past. And to kind of reach back to the all-day work session, I know there was some conversations among the council about how this was perhaps a little bit of a surprise that the departments have been asking for some of these things over time. So it's worth noting, as you can see, and in the reason this table doesn't have consistent years, just some of those years that are not that are requested. So that's why they were excluded, just to make it a little easier to see. The one thing I would stress, though, and we've talked about, and we'll talk about it in a few slides, are really in '24 and '25, to the, particularly on the control, to your comment about some of the increases, there may be an opportunity to feather some of these FTEs out into other years to lessen some of those changes over time, so they're not so immediate. And there's an opportunity to look at them in a little greater detail. The other thing I would say right now is this, these requests don't necessarily look at service levels or other data that are related to service levels, meaning that the requests are coming from the departments. They have not been vetted for things like calls for service, number of building permits, things like that. Again, I believe those are some of the things that will be discussed as a part of the organizational analysis.
Kara?
So just so I'm, I'm understanding, so by 2029, like 2030, we would have...
we would have 43 and a half additional full-time employees.
As currently requested.
As currently requested. And so that is the reason why our general levy is looking to, is being proposed to increase from 30,000 to 55, or 30 million to 55 million.
That's a good portion of it.
During that period.
That's a good portion of it. It will also be inflation included in the plan.
Okay.
So there'll be additional revenues that would be needed to cover inflationary costs.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay. Ryan.
I would just like to point out, it's important to note that that's tax-supported funds. So some of our, in public works, some of our key aspects are in sewer water. So that's not reflective of those. So just, just so you know, we do have some of the utility funded requests that are.
Yes.
Our primary focus, actually.
Thank you.
Also, Metamayor, members of the council, just in the, in the spirit of you understanding the exercise that we asked the leadership team to go through together. These 44.5, Councilmember Schultz, to your, to your point, the 44.5 over the 10-year period of time is what I would broadly classify as, as a whittled-down version of the leadership team's wish list. This 44.5 started with, I believe, almost 90 FTE requests, 88. And the group together tried to bring it to, well, my kids oftentimes ask for ridiculous things for Christmas and their birthday, right? So trying to whittle it down to, to what seemed to be a more reasonable future outlook. All of that being said, we're keeping with total FTE counts here because we have a staffing analysis underway that will much better inform and look at and prepare us to have conversations for things like service level as we, as we get the right information in front of you to make the right policy decisions for the community.
Quick question. Is there another chart to extend the full-time equivalent per thousand residents beyond 2022? Having the proposed additions going out to 2030, do we have that corresponding? So we could kind of see, that's.
With projected population growth.
Yeah.
We're hoping for population.
As much as we can project based on the apartments being built and et cetera.
We, we don't have that chart, but we can certainly, we have the data for the FTEs.
And I believe that when you do the analysis, most analytical firms that look at staffing, they look at, at population rate and how many per employees do you need for each of the different service areas.
Yeah, it's more of a barometer rather than looking at a solid number without having the context of what it's.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily, and that's, that's one chart that I have always liked to use because it, you know, there are, our growth in support of staff would grow with the population, not just because we want more people.
No.
That there's more demand out there, like fire and, and police. There's really straightforward data that, that supports that growth.
Councilmember Keely, that's a great point. I, I would also add or ask of the council that you allow us to get through the staffing assessment to make those projections. I was, and the leadership team will attest, I think Dan could, could probably tell you many stories about my hesitation of putting these numbers in front of you right now. I, I don't like guestimates, and, and right now this very much is our, our best kind of designed scenario. That the investment that you've made in that staffing analysis will put objective fact behind this to check ourselves. And then I would like to come back to the council with, with that. Objective information, if that's agreeable to agree.
Absolutely, because I'm, I'm looking to that analysis. Because I look at the population, well, we're, we're not there yet, but I'm looking at the population analysis. You have a report, 2022, and the census tells us that we're at 65,000, not 62, so, yeah.
I would also, I would also say that, you know, we've talked about this before. A vast majority of our general fund expenditures are public safety-related. And I think there are some other metrics that we could overlay, and I see Bethany feverishly taking notes here, that we can overlay in our staffing analysis to help the council understand some of those pressures. Just talking this morning with BJ as an example, we're going to cross the 10,000 calls for service threshold in the fire department. That's going to be an important metric to look at, at our staffing plan, which you largely already seen, even dating back to last April. So those will be some other considerations we're going to weave into this conversation.
And because the point is that, you know, I've been wanting to see a staffing plan, and there are methodologies to get at that. And Dan Kay and the chief and I were at a conference where one of the organizations, one of the cities talked about how they got to their staffing plan and how they looked at the population and also then determined how many police FTEs that they needed. And it was, when we, and so that gives us a good idea of what the community needs. But there are other factors that each community puts into that analysis as well, so. Because we're not Minneapolis, we don't have the same kind of pressures and challenges that they have. But we're in a transportation corridor, and so there are challenges there. People, we're 65, but it's, we're an easy community to jump off, commit a crime, and get back on the freeway and get to where they need to go to be invisible by our police officers. So those are factors that we have to take a look at as well. And to Jenny's division, our neighborhoods have changed. So the, our culture and our community environment has changed. So you're challenged with the different aspects of how to keep the community vibrant. And so these are all factors from an analysis that can inform us. But we can also, as a group, talk about the actual experience that we have in this community. So I'm looking forward to all of that because this is great information, but I also understand that it's a moving, there are moving parts that we're going to have to come back to.
Metamayor, I just.
Okay.
I get that this is, and I do understand that this is, this is the first meeting. And it's the worstest of the worst-case scenario. And so.
Like I said, we had the two-by-four at the opening.
Yeah, my, you know, I don't sugarcoat questions or comments. I just, you know, you're presenting data and I, I present questions back. But I do understand that this is, this is not what's going to happen per se, that we have a long way to go. But this is a worstest of the worst-case scenario to at least set the table and say, kind of, here's the bottom. Now, if you want to get better, you got to make decisions. We got to do other things.
Okay.
Yeah, I joked with some of the department directors, and I didn't do it tonight, but in the past, I presented this information. I'll say something to the effect of, if I'm sure about anything, is that it's wrong. It's going to be different. It's going to change. So, and that's okay.
You're like a weatherman.
That's right.
You can throw these numbers out, and if they're wrong, it's okay.
Now, don't be that insulting.
You're better than I am.
Plus, but take it back here.
I was going to say it was a good comparison.
Yeah, but because I look at this, at this chart, and you look at Venetanka and their population rate and what their FTEs are, and our population rate and our FTEs. And with two different communities, the chief, I don't think their crime rate is any lower than, than ours. I think they're.
Every community is.
Every community is different, as, you know. And, and because, you know, they're 54, we're 62, then. It's interesting, because, yeah, Jenny.
Metamayor, members of the council, I would just say, this is not apples to apple. I mean, yes, it's city to city, but remember, each city has different types of service levels that they provide and different types of services. So we have full-time fire EMS. They, not a lot of these cities do. We have rental licensing program. Not a lot of these cities have as many rentals as we do and have that program. So some of them have more economic development staff because they're heavy in that and less in something else. Some of them maybe have their in-house investigations and maybe some of them rely on others. So it's, each city really is unique. And I, I'm hopeful that the CLA study will highlight that, like what our needs are for the services we're providing. So just, I just throw that out there to keep in mind. While it is, the numbers are comparable, the service levels could be very different in them cities.
And I agree with you. We're all different, and different factors will play into the decisions that we have to make.
Exactly.
Exactly right. My standard disclaimer with all of these is that comparing different communities can be very challenging and sometimes even a little dangerous from the inferences that you can draw from it. So what we've tried to do, and we talked a little bit about just kind of smooth some of this data using that per 1,000 resident. One thing I would mention here is the population, those are actually 2019 numbers. That was kind of the readily available data, and we wanted to use it consistently for comparison purposes. And some of the FTE figures may be a little different because not all of the cities publish their FTEs in a way that was as usable. So there's just some disclaimers there, but, so it's not, it's not perfect data, but I think it gives a good sense and insight into some of the comparisons. So as you can see right now, 4.6 FTEs per 1,000 residents, for those kind of in that middle third. If you were to add those additional FTEs that we have been talking about, you would really just go from seventh to sixth. So you would stay in firmly in the middle. For comparison purposes, we held all of these FTEs flat. So we assumed that those other communities were not going to be adding anything. We know that's probably not the case. Again, it's a conservative scenario. So it's possible that, you know, this number could actually go down the list if other communities were to keep adding their own FTEs. But just by way of comparison, you can see that among your 15 pure market cities, even if you added those double-digit number of FTEs, you would just still be in the middle of the pack. So. I'll cut my thing off there a little bit, but it says genius is 1% inspiration and 99% budget allocation. That's the goal. We're going to talk about everything by fund. I know we've been chatting for just about an hour. Is the group comfortable? It's just kind of continuing? Or would anyone like a little bit of a break?
Yeah, why don't we go for another half hour, Dan, and then we can take a break and you can rest your voice.
All right. So we'll go by fund. We can launch it in the general fund first. And some of the ones that are a little bigger have a little bit more going on. There are a couple of slides and some of the more straightforward ones, there may just be one. But a few things are happening in the general fund first, and we'll talk about it in another slide here as well. We are transferring or moving about $740,000 of personnel costs from the cable franchise fee fund into the general fund. This move was originally contemplated as a part of the 2022 budget. The first year was in the 2023 financial plan. Mainly because those franchise fees are essentially flat. There's a core cutting phenomenon, and that fund has a structural imbalance and can no longer support those additional activities. Right now, as we've kind of talked about in bits and pieces, the general fund is going to be supporting 38 new staff positions over the next four years, and then those additional kind of six to six and a half positions happen in the out years. So you can see right now in 2023, to support those 12.5 positions, we're estimating about $1.5 million in additional costs. I can tell you that there is something of a convoluted spreadsheet that supports that number. So this is, this is all-inclusive of salary, benefits, travel and training, miscellaneous costs of equipment, if any vehicles are needed, et cetera. We've tried to factor in all of these different numbers by their respective funds. So that is generally what we would think to be an all-in cost for those FTEs. Something that has happened in the past, just by way of disclosure. Sometimes we, the numbers only include perhaps salary and benefits. So we've tried to provide a more inclusive cost. So you see the breakdown here. Most of the FTEs going to public safety, the rest to general government. General government's a very general term. It includes pretty much everything else that's not public safety or public work, so let's wait.
Dan, answer the question.
Dan, does this include, you know, the potential safer fire grants that we would get to offset, you know, the first 45 years or years?
It does not. So again, as a conservative scenario, it doesn't anticipate receiving either COPS or SAFER grants. So in the event that the city were awarded those grants, then this model or the budget process would have to be adjusted accordingly.
But it also wouldn't hurt to consider financing some of these things side by side in anticipation of future years either, so.
Correct. And the other thing to keep in mind as well is those COPS and SAFER grants will lapse at some point in time. So the city would still have to increase its property tax levy over those granted years in anticipation of bringing those FTEs onto the property tax-supported status.
We didn't get any last year at all, so.
No, we didn't.
We would just have.
We didn't, we did not get SAFER and we did not get COPS.
Yeah, we would just have, the nice thing about those is you get three, you get to buy the cost over three years. So practice stepping up slowly instead of boom, all in one year.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the value of having those grants that are, gives us the opportunity to plan for getting them all into the general fund.
Right, you can feather them in over a series of years. And the nice thing too as well is if you don't assign any additional cost of some of that additional, you can then use that also to bolster your fund balance over those times if you don't have additional things you want to be doing.
Yeah. Great.
Just as a reminder, we are out with a SAFER grant for six. We'll see how that plays out to the, the previous discussion. And the FTE complement that you're seeing in front of you, again, our kind of best estimate design plan at this point in time does include those public safety needs. So the, the needed firefighter, paramedics, the needed police officers, that complements reflected irregardless of SAFER work counts.
And lucky us, if we get it, then you can make the adjustments at that.
To, yeah, to Councilor Keely's point, it allows us to ease into those costs.
City will know later in the year, we can make those adjustments accordingly. And then just to Dukel and Ryan's comment again, this is just for the tax-supported funds. So there are a handful of other public works staff that are contemplated in the requests that we receive from the departments. And those will be, those will be addressed as part of the 2023 budget process. There is not being a revenue here.
Sounds like you'll be here later in the year then. I thought I just heard him say, we will later in the year adjust those.
Meet at.
I did, I did too.
Meet at an hour and seven minutes.
As I've said many times, Eller stands ready to assist.
Although something we do want to back.
We're kind of not wanting to give it back.
Moving on to the next slide. Can we move the screen sharing up? Because we'll have some things to spot. So the one thing you have in your package as well, there are about 75% of all the general funding expenditures are personnel-related. So it's just keeping in mind that especially when some of those compensation benefits changes happen, only about 25% of all the costs are current expenditures. It's basically people. So just know that when we move forward, talk about the ledger process, when we deal with the FTEs that will impact the fund. Then you have to click back on the. So this is what the general fund balances end up looking like. As you can see, kind of in those first few years, there is, there's something of a deliberate spend down in fund balances. And then right now, as a part of the projection, as I mentioned, we have engineered a plan to basically hold the city stable at that 45% to be consistent with GFOA and go as safe as practices, not fund balances. So you can see generally, the funds will remain consistent based on those property tax numbers that we've provided you. The other thing that I would stress is that this assumes that the city will come, will claim all of its ARPA funds as relevant loans and use those monies to buy down those property tax increases to support those additional FTEs. So that is an assumption that is built into the model at this point in time. So in the previous financial payment was 2 million, 2 million, and 2 million. Now it'll be 2 million, 3 million, 3 million. And that will essentially use all of the 8 million and change that the city has received. Overall capital projects, $243.2 million over a 10-year period, or I think the better way to say is probably a quarter of a billion dollars of capital projects. As you can see right now, streets and the infrastructure trust fund make up the, really the balance of that investment. So really just a bunch of pavements and pavement-related facilities. And then some facilities-related costs. This does include that phase, the phase three projects. And then on down, you can see equipment, parks, IT, and then kind of all others. We'll walk through each of these in a little greater detail.
Yeah. Kara.
I'll give you go. Okay, so in 2026, could you explain that to me?
That is an interchange project that the city is planning on receiving a federal grant for.
Yep.
I believe it's.
13 and.
13.
13, yep. 13 and 10.
Okay. I believe it's a 30, 29 and a half million dollar project, something along those lines. I believe it's a 30, 29 and a half million dollar project, something along those lines.
I have bifocals and I can, like, it's, it's right to where I can't read a damn thing.
I feel your pain.
I, I, I feel your pain and I forgot my readers to try and.
I know, so I, I'm sorry. So that like the green color equates to?
Expenditures by fund, yeah.
Got it, okay. Because I was trying to look down at the little key and it looked like forestry and I was like, what the hell are you doing, man? Are we Johnny Appleseed, the state?
Cities are supposed to buy all the trees.
Right, they're going to buy all of the trees. Right. The green's like, man, I wish.
So the green is coming from the improvement construction fund.
Okay.
And all of these numbers are before any other revenue sources to pay for them.
Got it, okay, okay.
We would expect a big portion of that green line to be made up from a federal grants.
Absolutely, yeah.
Get that.
I'll call that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, no, my, my confusion came because it looked like the green was connecting to like this little teeny green square that was forestry.
Close.
So that's where I was like, the hell.
Not the same shade of green, but I couldn't make it out. But the only thing that I know is that we have Highway 13 and, and Nicholas that we're talking about. And that's going to be grants from both state, but mostly federal. The rise.
We have to get the grants in order to.
I can't see it.
And then just again, the disclaimer, it includes a utility fund or any funds that aren't included in the plan itself. Although there are other capital projects related to utilities.
Okay, Greg.
Thank you.
Just as a matter of practicality, Mayor Council, I'll make sure that you have an electronic version of this presentation that.
So we can enlarge.
Thank you.
So that we can enlarge.
And we also have started our 2023 budget page and, and web access for the community. We'll make sure that all of these presentations and videos of these discussions are available to the public as we.
And I really like that. In one of your weekly updates, you talked about that all of this will be on the budget portal so that our residents can take a look at it. And tonight is also open to our residents, and I see that there are five of them. It's not just BJ that is watching.
My newspapers.
BJ important.
Yeah.
Just, I wanted to ask about the, the new, I don't know if it's an interchange, but the new exit ramp up of 35 that goes into the Ursel Center. Is that in this 10-year?
Yeah.
And I didn't see a big spike cost for that one on the little column.
That one's just 5 million.
Yeah, yeah. It's not really that big if you remember.
So there's $3 million of that is from grants. And then we got 1 million for the.
This is a breakdown of just the projects by really categories, some of the larger individual ones through the particular part of the plan. You can see most of it, about 16 million is street improvements. So these are your typical reconstruction, renovation, rehabilitation project. And then as mentioned, we, in each of these capital project funds, the costs are inflated by about 3% each year. So the infrastructure trust fund, right now we're assuming a 3% year-over-year increase in the property tax levy that supports it and a 1% increase in the MSA funds. The model also takes into account about $204,500 that the city received in a one-time appropriation from the Met Council using some of their COVID-19 relief funds. They put it essentially through the state aid formula, so all of the metropolitan cities got a portion of it. I believe the mayor may have provided an email to the city council about that in the past. Right now, there is no bonding that is currently recommended, and the red line on the chart basically indicates the informal fund balance that the city staff uses in order to track the fund. Really, it remains above the fund balance recommendation. And really, the only year that you'd have to take a peek at just to make sure that the council was comfortable with going under that normal balance would be in 2026. There aren't any major recommended changes to the fund because you can see in 2027, it rebounds relatively quickly and then remains in a strong balance moving forward. So one thing I would stress when it comes to these fund balance thresholds is in any given year, it can be a public policy decision for the council to perhaps dip below it. Understand that you have, as the mayor mentioned, that long-term view to understand what the impact would be if you dip below those levels. So improvement construction, oh, we talked about this one a little bit already, so you've seen a clip of the Highway 13 improvements that just under $31 million. As noted below, about 29.5 million of that would come from a federal raised grant in order to accomplish the project. It's worth noting too that in another fund, there's about a million dollars in MSA that would also be used to pay for the city, a city portion of that project. But right now, the one thing to mention is the fund basically assumes that there's going to be about $47 million intergovernmental aid that will flow into the fund. Again, 30 million of that is one grant, but then there's also some funds that come from Dakota County and also your post landfill, post landfill grant projects. That's a grant that you get annually from D. One thing I would mention to the council is we do know that D is considering adding two communities to that grant program. And there is a set appropriation for that amount of money. So there are only two cities in it right now, so it's possible that that post landfill grant project number could go down significantly. So we'll have to kind of wait and see.
Vince, you know what, cities?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Tell me your pitchforks.
So and then also there's about $15.5 million in bonding also planned over a 10-year period. So facilities, right now about 26.7 million for phase three makes up the balance of the expenditures for the fund. At this point in time, there are some challenges with the facilities capital project fund. We are modeling about $5.1 billion in franchise fees per year. The model assumes that those franchise fees will remain flat. We do plan, as part of the 2023 budget process, to look at some growth figures because there are additional apartments and things like that coming online. So there may be an opportunity to adjust that number somewhat after reflection of that growth. But right now, there is no assumption in the increase of fees. There is 3.67 million pledged to debt service after phase three. So all three phases of the, of the facilities improvement projects are supported through proceeds to the fund. And then right now, we know there'd be about 1.43 million left for capital projects. But the average amount of projects right now is right around 2.5 million. So the additional costs are not supported by revenues that are flowing.
Okay, Dan, Kate.
So just want to go back to your franchise fee. It's, you're fixing it at 5.1 million based on, is that 2021 or 2020, sorry, 2022?
The amount included the 2022 budget.
2022, so with all of the additional apartment units, residential units coming on, it will naturally grow with the number of units, but that's not factored into your.
Not at this moment, no. Eventually, we'll have to get the breakdowns from the utilities and do some analysis. And we've already started working on some of that, so that would be, that can be discussed in the process. But it's in all likelihood that natural growth that would occur around the amount of franchise fees will not be enough to make up the gap that exists between the average capital project costs and the amount that's remaining year over year.
Yeah, it's residential, it's not a.
Karen. So question on the projects that we have. For phase three, for Fire Station Two and City Hall, if we could get a breakdown if those two were separated, that would be helpful.
Do we have any estimates on what City Hall was versus Fire Station Two?
Councilmember Schultz, Councilmember Keeley, members of the council, the phase three study, and I might look to Garrett here a bit, but the phase three study will vet a lot of that out. So short answer, Karen, yes, we can get those, those breakdowns in numbers. Right now, that $26.7 million is a budgeted placeholder. Nothing more, nothing less. So that process, over the course of the next couple of months, will bear out the specifics. And I, I would be remiss not to bring back to the council a breakout of each of the projects. And Garrett, I think by and large, that's what we requested of BKV through the, through the work.
Yeah, absolutely, and we have scheduled, we have plans to come to work sessions to keep you abreast of what's going on with the projects and key findings and things like that. A long way to get your employment, obviously engage the community and our stakeholders, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll have lots of information once I'll.
And we'll follow the same process with the principles that we instituted for the fire station.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll allow us to get to some good data.
Much more discussion there to come. Those will be policy questions for the council.
Okay, Dan. T.
That's right.
So I, T.
You can't have too many Dan's.
I know.
It's not confusing at all.
No, that's why I go Dan, Kate, Dan, chief, Dan, T.
Yeah. So the thing to keep in mind is right now, with this particular fund, the city may need to explore significant changes to how this fund is structured and how it's financed. Essentially, there are, and there are nuances in each of these individual options, but you could raise the franchise fees, you could reduce or delay or restructure certain projects. Or as suggested here, because again, as we talked about at the beginning, we've tried to basically take what is in the budget and consistent with the council's priorities and try to make it work, you could issue bonds to fill those gaps. So as you see right now, in these three years, there is just under $10 million in bonding that would be proposed through the balance of the 10-year window, which is why this fund doesn't go negative because it's basically being propped up by that financing. The other thing to keep in mind is the fund cannot support this debt service through franchise fees. So these would ultimately be debt service levies that would be needed to support additional facilities projects. Moving into equipment, just a little breakdown by some of the major areas and cost centers. So fire and 4.5 million, there's a couple rescue pumbers that are planned. Police, 4 million over the window, about a big, big ticket item there, $700,000 for a mobile command center, which I believe is in 2025, but we have been engaged in some discussions about that perhaps moving forward in the budget process, given some challenges that currently exist in the equipment. So there may be some things that could be changing there. Streets, quite a few class seven and class eight vehicles, so basically dump trucks and things like that for some additional costs. And then parks, quite a few mowers in parks, so. And then other departments, these are things that you can think about, like some of the over-the-road vehicles. So like some of the replacement vehicles for like inspectors and things like that make up the kind of balance. And then right now, we are assuming a placeholder of about $2.5 million a year. One thing I should have mentioned in the previous slide, the placeholders that you see are really based on the average of the previous five years. So we've kind of modeled that forward with inflation, if you were basically to continue your current expenditure.
Dan, Kate.
You're using, this was what I was thinking about earlier. Are you using 3% pretty much across the 10-year period for inflation?
We are at this point in time, yes.
That one might be a little on the low side, where the other one's a little.
I agree.
That's probably a little.
Too rich.
Wishful thinking.
There was methodology behind that. As we went through the details of the capital improvement plan, we found that some projects and equipment was already inflated and some was not. So rather than go through line by line, because the CIP is pretty robust, what we did was rather than try and take out the existing inflation that was already included in the CIP that we got from the city, or rather we just inflated it a little bit more to take into account those, those items that had not been inflated.
So the 3% is on top of some that was built in, right?
Right.
Depending on the individual fund.
Yeah.
So for example, one of the, one of the nuances that we talked.
It is padded a little bit.
It's padded a little bit, okay.
Yeah. And like one of the nuances we talked about with like equipment, for example, some of the vehicles were inflated and then some of the specialty vehicles, like the mobile command center, maybe were not because they just weren't exactly sure about the cost of it should be. So there's some of that is built in, so in some situations there may be some double counting. But normally what you end up doing, and we'll see, it could be a new inflationary environment over the next 10 years, but normally a two to three year-over-year inflation tends to capture all of that kind of back and forth.
Agreed.
So it kind of works itself. So here's the equipment and vehicle fund. One thing that we have done is we have a new recommended minimum fund balance for the fund. And the reason the line jumps around a little bit is that unlike some of the other funds where it's a flat percentage or just a flat amount, this is a rolling 35% of a five-year average of the expenditures. And that's primarily because, as everyone is aware, capital spending tends to be episodic and cyclical. So you may have large outlays in one year and not so much in the next, large outlays, not so much the next. And so it becomes very difficult to kind of peg fund balances to next year's expenditures because next year's expenditures could be quite large. So what we try to do is smooth that out by taking this rolling average. And so you can see basically as expenditures increase, the average goes up, and if they go down, the average goes down. And what this helps you do is really figure out how much money you need in any given year to help support capital costs. And so in this plan, right now, in '22 and '24, you would be significantly below the fund balance threshold. The point of these fund balance thresholds is really to put the city in a stronger position to respond to unforeseen circumstances, increases in costs, emergencies, a new need in the community, new council direction on new programs or initiatives, having money available to accomplish it. The fund balance threshold also allows the community and the city to respond to pressures before the fund goes to zero. So you go below zero, that's the red light. You go below the fund balance threshold, that's the flashing yellow light that you need to take a little time and think about it. And normally, when this is done, as you can see here in 2025, that's when it dips, which means you have a couple of years to kind of figure it out, think about the projects, perhaps identify additional funding sources, internal efficiencies, what have you. Just gives the city a little more time and a little more nuance in trying to figure out how much money ought to be in the fund. So as you can see here, we are proposing a little bit more of an increase in the property tax levy from '24 to '26, much like we talked about with infrastructure trust. It does dip in '25, but ultimately it does rebound pretty quickly. That's primarily because there are two bond issues that are included in this fund basically to finance larger equipment purchases in both situations, equipment for the fire department, rescue pumbers and hand clutches. And so you can see this here, 2025, this dips mostly because of that $700,000 mobile command vehicle, which is why I mentioned it earlier. So this may move a little depending on what ends up happening with that particular piece of equipment, given its large cost. So as I mentioned, ultimately, the city will just need to closely monitor this fund to make sure that it remains compliant with these fund balance levels. And as you can see also in the out years, there are some challenges. Admittedly, and you'll see kind of later in the fund, we're not as concerned with the out years. I think it's good for an order of magnitude to understand perhaps the nature of the problem, but obviously, there's quite some time between now and 2031 and 2032. So it gives you kind of a peek at the horizon. We may not necessarily adjust some of these funds to correct for issues in those particular years.
Before you move to the parks, capital fund, why don't we take a break, Dan? Give you time to rest your voice.
Okay, okay, you can take a break.
We'll reconvene in seven minutes. We'll reconvene in seven minutes.
Something.
Okay.
So moving into parks, uh, the greatest portion of the expenditure uh, planned through 2026, about 1.5 billion dollars in uh, playwood related park renovations. And then this is a number I thought was kind of fun. Uh, about $850,000 in fencing and border costs. So fences and like park quarters and playground borders and things like that, so 850 grand. Uh, one thing to keep uh, an eye on here is in our discussion with the leadership team, there was some identification of some amount of deferred maintenance or park projects. Which at the time were estimated around 1.5 million. As I mentioned on an earlier slide, the city is proposing to undertake a kind of park system evaluation inventory, which will help us understand exactly what that cost is. But for the purposes of the plan, we included a placeholder. It ends up being about $500,000 in 23, 24 and 25. So that may change, but uh, we wanted to make sure it was captured in the plan. The other thing that was discussed at the leadership team level was, and it's an empirical here, it depends on staff. There was certainly a conversation that there is not enough um, project managers really to support the vision of the park system uh, capital project fund. And so really there has to be more staff hired in order to deliver these additional projects. So it's um, an acknowledgement that there is deferred maintenance, things have been delayed. But then additionally, if they are brought online, the city wants to tackle those projects, there's going to be the additional staff will be needed to manage them. It's not just a question of hiring consultants because ultimately you need a staff member at the city to manage the consultants. They don't necessarily just go forth and do well and then come back to you with a project. There's a lot of interaction and a lot of iterations of what, of what happens. So that's something to keep in mind and because of that, there are some staffing considerations in those FTE requests that uh, we talked about earlier. So placeholder 1.5 million, the same inflation rate. So annual property tax levy increase of about 3.5% here. Here, there's no bonding recommendations in this fund at this time. The one thing that I would stress and you can see in this graph, looks a little different than the others. The blue are, is the park dedication fund balance. These are the monies that you receive from developments and they can only be used for specific purposes that are outlined in law. The green are what we term the park renovation balance. These are other monies that exist in the fund that may be used to support maintenance and other improvement projects.
Yeah.
And so as you can see right now, there are challenges with that park renovation fund balance. It actually dips and goes negative in 2025. That's primarily because of some delayed patrimony and some surfacing projects and then also that additional 1.5 billion dollars that we talked about on the previous slide. So this fund is really a little paradoxical is that it cannot, doesn't have enough resources right now to cash flow some of its park renovation costs. But it has ample reserves to pay for shiny new things. So there's a little bit of a catch 22 in this fund and it's something that the city will have to navigate and do forward. As I mentioned, there are no bonding recommendations, but there may be financing options in the future if the city wanted to tackle some of those deferred projects. Uh, perhaps a single set of projects.
A question on that.
Dan, Kate.
Annual property tax levy, 3.5% increase a year. What on, what number is that 3.5% based on? Is that 3.5 points of 5.7 that's in our, or higher, or 10 in the forecast? Is this 3.5 points of that?
It's 3.5% of the levy that's dedicated to the parks capital project fund.
Right, so it's 3.5% of the parks special levy from 2022, which was 1.1 million 462,000.
Oh, just the 3.5% of that.
Of that.
It's not 3.5 points of our.
It is not.
So each of these individual funds have their own special levy that are assigned to them. So the, the adjustments are composed out of those amounts. So something to keep in mind, the other thing also is that the, the fund does model a decrease in park dedication fees over time. Again, with I being conservative that some of the redevelopment activities may wane and the city may not receive uh, as generous park dedication fees in any given year. So I believe in the out years it decreases to about $100,000 or something along those lines, correct? So there could be more in the future, but again, those additional park dedication fees, even if they were in excess of $100,000, wouldn't necessarily solve for the problem with that park renovation balance.
Correct. Up case law decisions uh, notwithstanding.
Right.
Not. Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so um, I will say with, not a lawyer, but to that point, um. The law, the lawsuit that is currently pending, that was the, the request for the uh, Supreme Court to review it, doesn't necessarily address the question of a lot of uses. It addresses kind of the calculation component. So I don't imagine that any decision, if granted by the Supreme Court, and if it were in the city's favor, would necessarily change kind of this component of how these funds may be used. It may just change how those funds are calculated, which could have an impact on the amount that's received in the out years.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Joel's not here, so I can't make my lot of ins, lot of outs jokes. He's kind of rolling his eyes at me. Which I think you should probably know at this point in time, I just keep telling you because of that. So IT capital projects, so right now 8.5 billion dollars planned over the next 10 years. 2.8 million for infrastructure, PC upgrades and replacements. We are proposing a 12% increase in this property tax levy. Um, as mentioned here, 344,000 in 2022. So the average actually works out over that five-year period to about $55,000 per year. It's relatively immaterial, given the $41 million of the overall levy what's, you know, cut they have all the different special levies, general fund levy, debt service, what have you. So uh, it's just, it's a, it's an high popping percentage just because of the amounts that are in play, but it's not necessarily a huge sum. Uh, we then assume 3% thereafter, as you notice here, there is a, a little bit of a dip. So the city will need to closely monitor this fund for compliance with this uh, rolling average that has been included in this fund amount. The other thing that I would say is that these amounts do not necessarily reflect any greater use of technology by the government. So it's, and I'm not sure Tom can speak more eloquent than I can, but I would imagine in these out years, there will be even more ubiquitous use of technology for the, for the city. And at some point in time, that may, these out years may have to be addressed for those additional costs. The other thing to keep in mind with this fund, and this may be a little random for the council, but it could end up changing how some of the property taxes get assigned. We have identified in this fund several, what we would consider operating costs that have been paid for out of this fund that could eventually migrate to the general fund. In which case then we may reassign some of the property tax levy in order to keep the difference between the funds the same. But that's really a recognition of the fact that technology is an incredibly important part of the city. It's going to become more important over time, it's likely going to become more expensive over time just by the use of new and different things. And there may have to be some fiddling that will have to happen as um, probably unlike any other area of the city, this rapidly, rapidly changes. So.
Well, it's a significant infrastructure for the city.
Yep. And we've even.
Just get control of it, Tom, don't worry.
We, we've talked about it a little bit too internally, uh, something that could change is some cities actually will also go through the process of perhaps creating uh, an IT internal service fund. Where essentially it would operate like an enterprise and charge other funds for its technology. So there are a few ways to kind of solve for this issue. The plan doesn't necessarily get into those types of ins and outs. Um, and I guess by, by, by way of the joke, I was told by the finance staff that if I wanted to help with that, I would have to hang around for a little longer. Wow, he played into it.
Yeah.
I think, I think he's warming up to it.
It's not helping the case. Sometimes you just kind of leave with your jocks, kind of. So the cable franchise fund, we talked about this one a little bit. Uh, Gene described this as a fit, half a fish and I can't unsee it now.
You're welcome.
You did cheat.
Yeah.
You did that with forestry too, okay.
We'll get to forestry.
Yes, I did.
So as we mentioned, there's a shift of about $740,000 in personnel costs that are going from this fund into the general fund because of the structural imbalance that was referenced. One thing to help the general fund pay for those associated costs is there is a transfer back. So essentially monies have been, personnel have been moved from one fund to the other, from cable to general. And then cable's also paying a portion of it, but it's not paying full freight. So that means the general property taxpayer is paying some money for the personnel that were originally supported by the franchise fund. Uh, but again, that's just a function of the fact that the franchise management assumes no increases in those cable franchise revenues. There may be some maneuvering around growth as perhaps maybe more uh, accounts come online. But ultimately we anticipate the cord cutting phenomenon and probably overcome that. So again, very conservative, it may even go down, we'll have to wait and see. But really what's happening here is uh, in these out years, even though some of those personnel costs have been moved, the current expenses that are supported by this fund. The inflationary pressures on them eventually overtake the franchise fee and then that's why it dips in these out years. So this is something that the city will have to continue to monitor all the time to really see what's happening with those franchise fees. And then there may have to be additional costs that need to be uh, reallocated. The other thing to keep in mind too, and it's not reflected in this um, table like with parts, but there are some restricted balances here related to the pay fees. Those are public, educational and government fees that are paid to the fund, those can only be used for specific purposes. Usually tech, uh, technology is replaced for like the personal, maybe television. So not all of this is generally available.
Yeah, and in the last five years, that fund has gone down, correct? Because a lot of people have made different choices rather than uh, taking uh, cable, Comcast cable. They have chosen other methods of getting their internet, their telephone and so forth. So we knew that when we went into our last negotiations with Comcast.
Another thing to say here, and it's beyond financial management plan, but. Federal rules and regulations around these funds have also made it a little more difficult for cities to collect franchise fees. So there's also some regulatory factors kind of arrayed against this fund. Forestry fund, which again, Gene, is a, basically a felt Christmas tree. So I appreciate that too. Maybe not the best symbolism for the forestry fund, but yeah. In fact, you gotta take out those diseased trees, that's what happens, that's what it's for. So it's basically, see, it's stable at $250,000 in property taxes per year. There's nothing that's projected for increase. The operating costs remain essentially the same through the period. There's, there's some capital that's paid for by the fund, but it's relatively minor. And so this presentation is really consistent with the budget book. Again, the city will have to really monitor the fund in these out years just to make sure it doesn't dip too far. Uh, but again, in those out years, we don't necessarily recommend significant changes. It's just something to keep an eye on and know that over time, if these costs, operating costs remain in excess of that property tax levy, eventually the fund will run out of money. It also doesn't model any, for example, like EAB grants or things like that that could be received by the fund in the future to support other initiatives. So there's no additional revenue that's identified. This one's doing okay, just something to keep an eye on in the future. Street revolving, so key takeaway here, consistent with the budget book, the city should just maintain the current practice for this fund. Street revolving, so key takeaway here, consistent with the budget book, the city should just maintain the current practice for this fund. This fund's doing exactly what it needs to be doing. The one thing to keep in mind though, and the reason to talk about budget practices as the key takeaway is there are significant transfers from other funds that support the operations of this fund. So like a lot of the interconnected funds with transfers and changes happen, costs are pulled in different directions. If these transfers are affected, the solvency of this fund could be impacted. So it's just something to keep in mind about how this fund is financed, that really there is a significant amount that comes from the general fund every year for 2022. That's about $372,000 and then it actually jumps into the out years. And then of course, there are some portions that come from the utility funds to pay for their parts of these projects. So the ICE center fund, just saying it off, the operating revenues cover the operating costs. And I tell you that is interesting because many cities do not cover their operating costs for their ICE centers. So that's something to note and be very proud of. And so, but it's also worth noting that when it comes to some of these capital costs, other funds are supporting the costs of the ICE center. So operations are being covered, but right now there are about $915,000 in capital projects assigned to the fund, which does not include about 2.2 million that are paid from the facility's capital project fund. Now that, that in of itself is also common. That happens, many cities do support these types of enterprises with other funds. So it's common to see it for ICE centers, you know, for entertainment centers, for nature centers, golf courses. That's very typical. So the city is really consistent with practices with other communities in this way. So we are recommending increasing the charges by 3% year over year, essentially just to make sure that key balances remain sufficient. The one thing to keep in mind, just because in those out years, some of those cash balances do dip below the targeted minimum working capital. Some of these additional capital projects may have to be restructured, some of the operations may need to be looked at. But something to keep in mind, it wouldn't be a wholesale departure from what the city is doing. It would just be that some of these things may be, they need to shift to a different fund to make sure that the fund doesn't get into tenuous of a financial position. Aims Center, so this is a situation where the operating, the operating does not cover the operating costs. The other thing to keep in mind here and part of the reason that this chart looks a little dire is that there are no host fees and there are no, any more transfers from city funds. Up until really 2022, there were significant transfers.
Yes.
And additional revenues from host fees that were flowing into the fund. And those non-operating revenues were really what was keeping the funds positioned in these areas.
Remind me again why we made that change on the host fee that helped to operate the AIMS Center?
Primarily it was because of uncertainty around the host fees themselves with the.
Yeah.
The landfill was going through the process of having its expansion.
And we needed more stability.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's possible that at point, at some point in time in the future, if the city negotiates a more generous host fee, there may be an opportunity to use some of those revenues to support this fund. One thing I would keep in mind, again, I'm not an attorney, but generally you try to look for a nexus between the, for the fund's source and the fund's use. And AIMS Center may not necessarily be a nexus if those funds are assigned directly, but to use a fancy word, everything is fungible, so we could always put money in a different fund and then move some resources around.
Well, one of the decisions back when we made the, uh, the decision to have the host fee is that we've been host to garbage for so many years since the 50s. And the citizens of Burnsville don't see it, what that money is been used for. So having the, uh, the AIMS Center and having the host fee funded, I've always said garbage money is helping us to pay for that. Yeah. Great.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd just like to brighten your day a little bit. The good news in the AIMS Center fund is that we did, you did last year, really address the capital needs of the AIMS Center. And I know that in my interactions with Brian, he's very grateful for that. And I think we were on a much better course in terms of some of the decisions you made last year. Obviously some work to do in the future. That's what future oriented policy decisions are all about. And we're on a really good track in terms of taking care of that facility and continuing to allow it to thrive from a capital perspective. So there is good news here too, as you, as you think about the financial future. And remember, this isn't, this is an enterprise fund. These are, these are not uncommon visuals when it comes to, to talking about these types of, of financing arrangements.
So a nexus in a real long stretch since we've been host to garbage.
There you go.
We had to find a way for the people to know that there's something to show for being a host community.
I think it's worth saying that France leadership, we expect the aims to go back to a positive operating profit. And so we still have to, much like the ICE center, it's paying for itself, but when it needs capital improvement, when it gets depreciation replacement, we have to fund that, right?
Right, so like right now, there's 2.7 million that's paid for the capital projects from the state's capital project fund. The other thing that's making this fund a little more challenged is the naming rights went down. So the amount that's being paid at this point in time. So as mentioned, maybe look at some additional funding sources or some operational changes. And if there is a plan at the AIMS Center to kind of raise more operating revenues, that may just, just be the ticket. So the golf course, much like a lot of municipal golf courses, the operating revenues do not necessarily cover the costs at this point in time. Though we are recommending fees be increased by 10% each year through 2026. That still keeps the fees, I would say relatively modest. I was joking with the group that, I was a golfer myself, even at the 10% increases, it would bring kind of just above 20 bucks and that would be just fine with me to pay for golf. So something to keep in mind. And then kind of 3% here thereafter, again, same kind of challenge here. There are some capital projects that are in the fund, but 340,000 of them are paid for by the facility's capital project fund. So once again, you're going to have to monitor this fund for compliance with this working capital level. But generally it looks okay. One of the main questions here kind of with operations is it was quite a boost in golf because of COVID-19. Cause everyone became a golfer for a good 18 months there. That's one of the only things you do. And so we'll have to see how many of the golfers are actually converts and if any of those changes and habits actually kind of bear themselves out of the financial picture of the fund. So something to look at there, but generally good for the fund and they shot me arm and kind of help out the tenure projection. EDA fund, this was one of the items that was kind of in the file for discussion during this meeting. And right now, over the last few years, like reserves have been used to cover operating costs. There are some planned property tax increases that were included as a part of the 2022 to 2026 financial plan. 100,000 through 24 and then kind of 50,000 thereafter. As you can see though, even with those increases in 2024, the fund actually dips to just about $50,000. I know the council received some additional information about this through some of the council weekly information. But ultimately there is not a lot of money in the fund to accomplish any real robust redevelopment activities. And so really right now, there are not sufficient funds for things that the city could do in these redevelopment areas like acquire land, remediate soils, buy a strip mall that comes off for sale that you're interested in doing something with. There is just not enough money in the fund to accomplish some of those economic development visions. And others in economic development, uh, plan and strategy. And so this fund may have to be adjusted significantly to meet with some of the expectations and aspirations of those strategic operations. We did take a look and right now the city can levy about additional million dollars a year to be at the statutory maximum. And in fact, a great number of cities just levy that, the statutory maximum to support their EDA and HRA activities, depending on the type of structure that they have. So really at this point in time, the main takeaway here is the, the city really should consider increasing this property tax levy significantly. To use a very technical term here, to build an economic development war chest. You, if you, if you really want to be in control and have a say in what happens in those economic development situations, really you just need money. And you probably need at least a couple million dollars in a fund somewhere to come to the table with cash. Because as you know, when these properties come for sale, they only stay on the market for a limited amount of time. You don't have years to put together a financing package. So this fund gets there, but it gets there in 2030.
That's a big policy decision making that, uh, we on the council need to arrive at. Do we want to have control of our destiny with some of these properties that need to be redeveloped?
One thing I'll say too is we have some time set aside for the work session on the 5th, the next budget workshop to talk about EDA specifically. So that's one of the things that's currently on. So recommended bonding, as you can see here, penned in 2023. The lion's share of the bonding primarily because of the phase three improvements. I know that's a little small, so just trying to fit all the years onto one slide. The thing to keep in mind is the city may end up splitting that 2023 bond issue primarily because late rates are much lower right now. And if the city does plan to move forward with the phase three improvements, it may be advantageous to bond for some portion of it at a lower rate. So right now it's all in 2023, but just know as the economy changes, the project becomes more clear to the council and the needs are understood. There could be a move to bond earlier to take advantage of rates at that, at that point in time. But generally right now, the borrowing rate relatively modest over the 10 year period. In fact, when you look at it, all the existing property tax supported debt will be retired by 2029. And through the additional bonding, really less than half of it will be what the government is currently looking for. So I was mentioning below, new debt service levies as proposed are about a half of the 2022 amount. So the debt profile of the city is actually quite strong. Even though we've gone through and identified room for additional bonding, you know, we are putting additional borrowing on the debt service levy as it cycles off and ends up being a little less. So 2.6 million right now, David's franchise fees, that's on, on the debt service.
So we're sitting good with regard to the, our debt picture with the rating agencies. Because I remember when I was elected mayor, we were at a hundred billion dollars in debt and took it all the way down. And that's how we started to move from a double A to double A plus to triple A, but moved it down to about 46 million. And then we're back up to like 53 right now. In debt.
I believe, I had to double check that number.
About around there.
Yeah, we didn't really focus on total outstanding debt because that means me taking a look at debt that's supported by other than property tax sources. Including franchise fees, utility funds. So, but that's certainly something that we could, we can certainly pull that together.
Okay. But we're in a good debt position.
Yes.
Yeah, ultimately, as you see here, as that gets retired, the new bonding that comes online, again, word used before, is relatively modest. And so this, this table right here reflects on all those previous slides where I mentioned bonding, bonding, bonding. Bondings are all on this table. So there is the, the, the big issue that will happen in 22, 23, depending on timing and some other questions related to phase three. But after that, as that new debt is retired, the debt levy will in fact go down. So that will provide some headwinds for some of the additional, I think, some online related to some of those property tax funded positions. So just a reminder, we went through kind of all of it. We talked about all the different things that changed in the individual funds, the additional bonding, the additional property tax levy, some of the projects, some of the ins, some of the outs. And just where we kind of started is where we kind of ended is making those assumptions. Again, we can work on some ranges regarding those valuations. But with all of that kind of baked into the model, again, in 2023, it'd be a 10.9% increase in the property tax levy for 40 bucks a year and 12 dollars a day.
Madam Mayor.
Yep.
I don't want to jump ahead because I didn't jump ahead. I don't know if you're going to cover this, but what would be reasonable timeline for asking for some what if scenarios as we go through this over the next few months? What ideas earlier on? Don't wait till we get through a couple of meetings before we request some what if scenarios or what would you like? I have a few ideas already. I'm ready to, but I, I know tonight's not.
I don't think tonight's the night. It's us getting the information. Dan, your thoughts?
You can certainly, if you have things you'd like us to look at, we're happy to do that and present those at the April 5th meeting. I think a month is enough time to look at some items, but not necessarily vet out some of the more complicated questions because we do have a number of ongoing studies. So those are the things that kind of have to be thought about. If you're interested in certain property tax scenarios, I think that's what we would be most interested in now. Cause ideally what we'd like to do to inform the budget process is to have some semblance of what the consensus of the council would be around a levy. So we can give instructions to the departments so they can form their budget requests kind of accordingly. Uh, then we have kind of a benchmark to operate from at that point in time.
About that number, don't you?
Well, I'm always eager to know it, yes.
Thank you.
So just to conclude, we talked about probably all these in some way, shape or form. Really the financial management plan is designed to respond to the strategic direction that's been provided by the city council. Again, we're trying to weave all of the different actions and directives that the council has provided over a series of years. And even as recently as the new strategic priorities. It's worth noting that some of the issues that have been identified in the financial plan really have been created over a series of years and they may take a series of years to correct. And that's okay. Good things take time and we have all the people in the room that we need to figure it out. But ultimately, a lot of these problems will not be resolved with next year's budget. Maybe not even the year after that or the year after that. The one thing to mention though is that the biggest impacts at this point in time in the plan are the years 23 through 26. And so as we talked earlier about some of those FTE requests, there may be an opportunity to feather those in with a little more nuance to perhaps reduce some of the property tax impacts in any given year, make them a little more level over a longer period. Those are all things that we can talk about in a future budget work session. But ultimately what the plan helps us do is balance the financial needs with strategic priorities and the organizational values of the organization. I've made the joke a few times to the group, you know, when it comes to being excellent and innovative and boldly leading and being vibrant, some of those things are terribly expensive.
Yep.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
You know, every community is different. They all have different needs, different service levels, different wants, different desires. And that's what this plan really tries to marry those aspirations with the financial realities that exist around some of those items. So as we move forward, we'll have to watch the fund balance of the various funds and we'll have to be sensitive when those additional revenues come online to make sure that we're not violating any of those fund balance requirements. As we talked a little bit and we'll do some modeling, the property tax rates may effectively depend on the timing of those items and when those things come online. And really the plan at this point in time, borrowing is limited as much as possible. We're trying to meet those capital needs, but also lessen the property tax impacts. Meaning that what we're trying to do is use that borrowing to smooth out what's happening in some of those rate structures. But we just talked about to the advantage of the city, what ends up happening is because that debt profile is going to be reduced over time, there's still a more limited impact on some of that additional borrowing. So ultimately I think the, the plan responds to the needs of the community and it really provides an opportunity for the city to create great experiences for the community. The last thing that I'll say is that we are really starting right now at a concept level. This plan is designed to provide broad brushstrokes and a framework to build the 2023 budget. The individual studies and analysis and inventories that we've talked about, the discussions with the leadership team, the individual budget requests, that will really be the design and engineering phase of the budget document. And then eventually later in the year, when the council adopts the budget, that's when we'll have substantial completion and the actual finished product. If you've ever seen me with the budget book, I am one proud Papa, so I look forward to that. But just keep that in mind. That's where we're at right now. We are at the kind of the 30,000 foot level. We've identified some goals and things will have to happen over a series of years. And basically we have the lines on the picture and we'll color in the spots over the next several months. So this is my favorite gif in the entire one.
Yep, I love this.
The bottom's a little hard to read, but it says, no entire sheet could be used, could become food or sweaters. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council or the leadership team may have.
First, I want to thank you, Dan and Jean and everyone who has contributed to making this presentation tonight. So educational in a way that allows us to go away with food without. But what I am most excited about is that all of the department heads are around this table. This is our family and we committed at the all day work session that we will work together because this is us to deliver to the city of Burnsville and its residents what they expect of us in terms of level of service. what they expect of us in terms of level of service. What was presented tonight is what the challenges are that we have to face. But together, I believe that there are opportunities for us as we look to the future. And that you've given us a 10-year lookout. So you've also given us a snapshot of what each year will cost us in terms of the levy. And that we need to take a look at all of that. But if we are going to be that city that's vibrant and boldly leading, that's welcoming to all, you're right, it's expensive. And, and it means that all of us around this table are going to work hard to really understand what it is that we can deliver on a yearly basis. But I like that it's a 10-year lookout. And then what do we do each and every one of those years gives us a good framework to work from. What I would like, Greg and Dan, is that if you would outline all of our budget work sessions and the areas that we're going to be addressing, so that we can think about them since we have this document and come in with ideas or whatever that is. But I also would say to our department heads, I want your input. I know that you're working internally to put this information together. But when we sit around this table as family members, I want to hear your input. Because you're delivering the service and you're out there with our residents. And so it's important. And it's important for all of us that our voices are heard. At the end of the day, the decision comes down to five people, but I want the input of our department heads. I don't know if, I don't have any questions right now, but I think when we break it up on which budget item, right now, I have a lot of information. I think somebody said that we're going to be drinking through a fire hose with this 10-year plan. And that's exactly what it is. And I'd like, I like to think about things and understand the impacts long-term. So I don't know if anybody else has any other comments to make or, or questions. Yes, Kara?
So I, I have a question. This is not one to be answered now. But my question is, in, in looking at this 10-year plan and also hearing some of the discussion, my, my question is, are we, are we looking in these next 10 years in altering Burnsville from more of a working class, middle-class city with lots of naturally occurring affordable housing to one that is more set up and more catering and, and trying to strive to be a higher-income city? So I guess I'm wondering what the flavor of this city is that we're trying to do over the next 10 years? Because we do need to know that to then to know what all of the priorities are. Like what do we want Burnsville to look like? Who do we want our, you know, who are our residents? What do we want their experience to be? Because that will dictate what we do for economic development and services and, and all of those types of things. So that's, that's a question.
I think that's a very good question, Kara, for all of us to, to struggle with. Because when you're going to look at, you know, a city with a certain kind of resident, then what are we saying about welcoming to all? And if we're looking...
And that, yeah, that's absolutely what I'm wondering.
And I, I think those are some of the things that we really as, that's not just the five of us. That's all of us around here. And then we're going to say, we are going to be looking at a high-income city, that, that also then means, and then this is Jenny in your, in your wheelhouse, is that what kind of businesses are we going to attract? And what does that mean? And then how much land do we have available? And there's a change in the industrial market. So, you know, what is the income level in that sense? Or do we want to go, because there was one time that we wanted to be a medical hub simply because we had the hospital and we had a lot of medical service. So thinking maybe we can attract some medical industry to come into Burnsville. But we were never able to achieve that simply because we didn't have the industrial land use for all of that. We had the zoning and we had TIF in place, but just did not have the land capacity for it. So those are very good questions and those are the kind of questions that we need to look at. Because if we're going to try and attract these businesses, then what is the resource that we're going to give to Jenny and her folks to make that happen? And that's, those are some of the things. Are we going to? And so the thing that I'm struggling with, and I think all of us, is that if we're going to look at Burnsville, because we talked about this at one point, what kind of residents do we want? And we all can't be high executives living in Burnsville because we've always been a community that people can come and afford to live here. And you look at our housing stock, Jenny, and what that median value is. We are an affordable city for people to live. And you look at our demographics and that has played out. Then you look at the whole city of Burnsville and you say, where can we have that high valued home? Well, there are places that I can see around Crystal Lake, around Keller Lake, around Summit. Shores, Jenny, I'm just thinking of the values of all of these neighborhoods. But I think that's a very good question for us to struggle with again, Kara. And then what does that mean if we're saying everyone is welcome? But you know, we do have good housing stock in the affordable level that's below median income. When I look at Vista View, south, north of you, Jenny, that neighborhood is very affordable, isn't it?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we've got a lot of
Yeah, a lot of them, yes, because there are places that I can go to. In being in a job for 27 years and walking the city, I know exactly where all of the different neighborhoods are and what they, they're valued at. But it's a, we should all have that conversation because it does have some impact in terms of, because I remember Edina going through this kind of conversation. And that's where they made the, the decision that they can, somebody can come in and buy up two of the small houses, lots. And I think it was in a Morningside neighborhood, Jean. And you guys could, and they can then build what they call like mansions. Oh my God, that was a big conflict, but some of the people really loved that. And Edina did that. Right?
Yep, she is. Yep, yep, they did.
And there were some people who had houses that now were shaded and they were so angry that this mansion now created shade for them that they didn't. And, but people came in and started buying up property in Edina and putting up those huge homes. That's, that's a policy decision that we have to make also because we went down. If that's what we want to do, where people can come in and look at our neighborhoods and purchase. And what does that mean about welcoming to all? But I think, but I think that is, you know, what we want to be. And we want to attract businesses. I remember when we did TIF 1 and 2, oh boy, and we went out and marketed the city to bring in industry. That was a huge job back in the, in the mid, mid 90s. But it's, that's a good thing for us to struggle with. I like that discussion. That would be good. Anybody else? Any comments, questions, directions for Greg and Dan?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at this point in time, you know, we're not necessarily making policy decisions, but I think what the staff would appreciate is just some general guidance is what is being presented here? Are we moving in the right direction? Is there anything that is a non-starter, out of bounds? These are the kind of things that will be very helpful for us internally.
Say for me, I'm just happy to hear the truth of what's going on so we can make assessments going forward. We have a lot of work to do and I don't think tonight's the night to start giving you where you're, where you're out of bounds or not involved. I think we all have to discuss that.
I agree with that.
Yes, I agree too. Right now, I'm grateful, truly grateful for the information. I think this is the first time that we've sat down as all members of the family, sitting and hearing disinformation. Good and the bad, you know, the challenges and the opportunities that we have before us. So you're, I would say that I agree with Dan and Kara. You're in the right direction. Let's keep moving and tackle the challenges that we have. You did have a slide that says partner, you're going to be okay. I believe in that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to say that anything is out of bounds at this point. I also, I know you're looking for a direction, but I am not prepared to give you direction at this point. We're just getting this information. So I have no direction at this point to give.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's perfectly okay. It's just helpful for us as we move forward to kind of know where you're at. That's very useful in framing future budget discussions.
Absolutely, and I, and I do understand that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll just need a little more help.
And that's what we do.
I'm grateful for the truth.
The fire hose.
Truthfulness of the, the information that we have tonight. And Greg, thank you so much for your leadership in all of this.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. To councilmember Schultz's perspective, I, I totally agree. I think tonight's about information sharing, starting to get on the same page. Not to be repetitive, but just by way of reminder, I'll make sure that you have an electronic copy of this. It will be up on our website. We did have some technical trouble this evening. We've lost about five minutes of the video, so we'll make sure that we reconnect with the community.
The full video is, will be final.
We'll make sure that, thank you, Carissa. What I'm hearing tonight, just for, for Dan's purpose and for the, the leadership team's understanding, a couple of things that we'll come back to you with on April 5th. We have a, a planned discussion on the EDA levy, so that's already well underway. We will bring that back. Councilmember Keely and councilmember Schultz had talked about scenarios based on property values and some of those assumptions. Worked with others to, to bring some of that information back. We also had some questions around additional units and the impact on franchise fees and how that may or may not impact the facilities fund or, or to bring some of that information back to you as well. Also hearing in the spirit that the council wants to continue to kind of reevaluate our vision and how the vision plays into some of the policy decisions that you're going to need to make through the budget process, right?
I don't know whether we want to reevaluate, but if we're going to make some changes, to continue to talk about. If we're going to make decisions that's going to not lead us into, you know, everybody's welcome here, then that's a, that's a shift.
We certainly will.
I want to talk about it. Yes, we do.
I think it's, I think it's important.
And I think it would be good for staff to be able to chime in.
Talk about that a bit, so we'll prepare.
That and it'll be a shift to the vision and that's, you know, then we just pivot and do something, pivot and do something different.
I think it's fair to the conversation at the all-day work session where we talked about what is boldly leading, vibrant city, boldly leading, welcoming to all really mean to the council? So that could be a, a good discussion to incorporate into April 5th. So we'll talk about how we best do that. Couple of things on hold. There, there was some discussion about per capita FTE. My plan would be to wait until the staffing analysis and our folks at CLA are, are ready with the leadership team to come back to the council. I'll work with finance to make sure that that's incorporated, Bethany and our HR folks, to make sure that that's incorporated well into our, our budget calendar. And we'll also make sure that that calendar is reiterated every time we're back with you as part of your background materials available on our public-facing website, just to make sure that the specifics of that budget calendar, any changes that we make to it, Mayor, to your point, are, are ready and available for us.
Well, you've captured discussion and the questions that Janet, Kieran and Kara put forward. Okay, and I look forward to the next time we come back together for the budget. And we want to make you a happy Papa with your, with your book.
Can I ask just a quick?
Yes.
I know we touched on this a few times, but if there's a way to incorporate some of the what-ifs, like the landfill fees, potential aggregate fees, things that we've taken off the table? And then how does that play back into this? Not specifically in one category, but just using some of those things that could be coming back around or new. Not any urgent, but I mean, if we've got potential funding sources that have been taken out of the general fund that could be coming back with the use of waste management and then what potentially could happen that might be worth going, how that impacts some of the, the long-range forecasting.
Really mobbing something.
This is a bit hypothetical.
Those fees that are part of a revenue stream, but right now, we're not looking very closely at it because we don't know for sure. But I think we have an estimate of what it is.
It's probably safe to say the cable franchise fees are coming back.
No.
That's a safe one.
That's a safe one. That's not. We have seen the trend in the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Any thoughts, comments?
One thing I would say before we close is I am very appreciative to the council and your direction and then also Greg's leadership, but I'm very grateful for my fellow department directors. I asked them quite a few questions and they were very prompt and thoughtful with the information that they provided. So everything presented this evening wouldn't have been possible without them. So they were dealing with me yo-yoing on things and sending them back information and asking for provisions and whatnot. So this only happened by the great, by the patience of their grace, so I appreciate that.
Well, that's good collaboration. And Jean, thank you so much for coming back and helping. And I really appreciate seeing you again and thank you for the work that you continue to do with us. You know, you stop in and give us good information and we make a decision and move forward. And thank you for your support this evening.
And mayor members of the council, it's truly been my pleasure to be here tonight.
Yeah, we'll still try to keep in. I know you said we can't.
Plan it as a bunch of.
All right, anything else? With, with that, we stand adjourned by our clemation. Thank you so much, everyone.